This is the Real Change Wilmington Podcast, episode twelve, Republican Primary First Ward City Council Candidates two thousand twenty-three, with our guests today, Kelly Tolliver and Josh Slavoff.
Our school is the main source of our community in my estimation. If we don't invest in our children, we're going to keep failing as a community. If we want new businesses to come in here, we have to have a good school system in place that's producing good results. Right now, we don't have that. A lot of businesses are not going to want to move here and employees that work for businesses are going to want to resettle in Wilmington. The school system is one of the first things you look at.
Sure.
And Clinton Massey and our surrounding schools are doing fairly well. We're losing headcount at Wilmington, from what I've heard. Our numbers are going down, students are leaving. We're not producing good results, and if I was a parent, I may do the same. And I want to help make that better. Wilmington can do better. We can be better.
What is going on, everybody? This is your host of the Real Change Wilmington Podcast, Dustin Pierce.
And I'm Emily Spencer, the co-host.
Who was ready to say her name today for the first time. I was eyeing her down hard. We had a talk in the car the way over here about being prepared to introduce herself when we start recording.
He just doesn't understand that I'm just uncomfortable with everything all the time.
Yeah, it's not my fault.
I was just born that way, I guess.
Okay. So we have a good episode for you guys today with the candidates for the First Ward City Council members. Any takeaways, Emily, from you?
I think it's really interesting to hear them speak about what they're passionate about and what led them to be so passionate.
Yeah, so we're doing this podcast just so people can know more about the candidates. I know when I go to vote sometimes, I just see a bunch of names. I think it would be good to hear from the candidates in their own voice about certain topics. So that's kind of why we're putting this together for people. Doesn't affect me at all. I'm on the first ward, so.
Fourth ward.
Fourth ward.
Fourth Ward Pride. This is a, this is a first ward problem, as they say.
Any takeaways from you?
I just really liked both candidates, to be honest, but again, first ward problems, so I don't got to decide anything.
First ward problems, fourth ward mindset.
I really think Kelly Tolliver would be cool as a council member. He teaches at Wilmington High School, not teaches, but he's a coach. So it'd be cool to have someone who's in the school be part of city council, I think that could be good. And Josh brings in something too, you know, he's a business owner and he is investing in the community and helping to revitalize it. They both have properties, I guess, business-wise, so I guess that's comparable. But he just brings a different kind of mindset, I feel like, too, so they both would be awesome, I feel like. But first ward problem. So we're going to bring in the candidates and let you guys hear from both of them and decide which one you're going to vote for. On May second, we're going to have Kelly talk first and then bring in Josh. So Kelly, welcome to the Real Change Wilmington Podcast. Thanks for making the time out of your busy day to come chat with us.
Not a problem, thanks for having me.
Yeah, heard that you were working until three AM last night on some projects, they're probably kind of tired right now.
Little groggy, still trying to slam some coffees.
All right, well, cool. So we're going to ask both you and Josh the four same questions and we'll give you five minutes on each question. You don't have to take the full five minutes, but we won't have you go over, we'll have a timer here.
Sure.
So we're going to, again, we're going to ask you about your family background, your history in Wilmington. Then we're going to ask you some public service accomplishments, why you're running for council, what your vision is and what you plan to accomplish, and then give you a chance to respond to any community criticisms or concerns. So sound fair?
Sure, yeah.
All right, so I'm going to hit the timer and then let you just kind of give us a background on your family background and history here in Wilmington.
All right, so my father was born and raised here. I think when he was in high school, he moved away to Preble County where he met my mother. And they, after they got married and had myself and two other brothers, we moved back to Clinton County. My father was asked to join the family farm. That was nineteen eighty-four, so I've been here since nineteen eighty-four.
Okay, what kind of farming does your father do? Did he do?
Crops. Yeah, it's all corn, soybeans and wheat mostly. Before we became part of the family farm, I know my grandfather, my uncle did raise some, they raised hogs and had a small head of cattle, but yeah, it's mostly all crops. At the height, I think Tolliver Farms was around somewhere around three thousand acres.
Okay, is it still in existence then today?
Yeah, it's still around today. My father's passed away though in twenty nineteen and my grandfather before him, so now it's just my uncle and a couple hired hands. But it's still going strong, I think there's still around fifteen hundred acres or so. So we grew up working on the farm with our dad, my brothers and I, so out in the country, over by the pheasant farm.
Okay.
Lived in the country my entire life until last year. My wife and I finally bought our first home in town, so now I'm in the first ward over behind Denver Edition.
Nice.
So that's how I ended up in town. Other than that, I throughout my adolescence, after working on the farm, I got a job around here at a local factory and worked there for a while. Became a supervisor on the production floor. It was a place called Micro Warehouse and then when the crash of, well, after nine eleven.
Is that where Sugar Tree Industries is at now? Micro Warehouse, is it? No?
No, no, that used to be a different company.
Okay.
Cincinnati Milacron, I believe.
Okay.
Was there a long time ago. Now building elevens where Micro Warehouse used to be. Now there's a company there called Connection.
Okay.
It was computer related. But at that time, I wasn't an IT person, I was on the production side, so had staff about sixty, seventy people.
Wow.
But that, that went under. It was bought out by another company right around the time DHL and all this stuff started leaving the area. So then I moved over to another warehouse in the automotive industry and worked there as a floor supervisor for a while. And the crash of oh eight came. I said, you know, I really like computers a lot, I'm going to go back to school. And I went to a trade school and got some certifications and dove into IT. So in two thousand and ten, I started my business. And now, now it's a, it's a full-time business, it's the only thing I do, but I kind of use that as a side business. So I've done my IT stuff all this time. I ended up back in the area, that same building was acquired by Connection. Who's there now and that's also a computer related company. And I worked there clear up till two thousand and two, but during the COVID madness, I left because I refused to wear a mask.
Okay. And you, you sold your business at the same time as a side thing?
Yeah, it's always been going at the same time.
Yeah, yeah.
They were related, so it worked well for me. I'd be able to keep myself immersed in new technologies that are coming out of my day job and I can use that same knowledge in my personal jobs.
Yeah, and you also do some, we'll get into maybe your other experience later, but do you have a physical location for your business then?
I do, I'm working out of my house now, but we just recently acquired a property over on Richardson Place in front of the high school.
Nice.
And eventually I plan to put my office in there as well.
Okay, do you have any employees?
No, I'm the only employee right now.
Okay.
My wife also runs two businesses, so she does medical billing out of the home and then she also runs a salon in town.
Oh, nice.
So I'm going to try to move her salon to that property as well.
Okay.
We've already had it zoned and all that, it's just been under construction for the last year.
Nice.
But the really cool thing about the property is there's a four bay pole barn on it and we're going to donate that space to the school.
Okay.
And this.
For what?
Wrestling program.
Nice.
So I'm the head wrestling coach at Wilmington High School. The state just sanctioned girls wrestling, finally. We've needed it for years that they have their own sport. And I want to help grow that program, so we need, we're going to need some extra space because we have a youth program, a junior high program, a high school program. And now when we add girls to the mix, we're going to need that extra mat space.
Yeah.
So I actually talked to the superintendent recently, we're going to try to coordinate with the school and open that up and it'll be another practice facility for us.
Nice, that's awesome. We'll get in some, so the next question's going to be, so we're out of time on that. Next question is public service accomplishments. So I'm assuming that plays into what you're going to talk about now, so I'm going to hit the timer, five more minutes. So yeah, tell us about your public service accomplishments then.
I've been coaching for about, I'd say since two thousand and seven solid. In the early two thousands, I did help a bit, but I was working kind of a swing shift, night shift, so I would only be able to go down and work out with some of the athletes at the high school. It was spotty through the week because I couldn't do anything during the day. And then in oh seven, I permanently started working with the youth over at the high school. But you know, all through that time, when my kids are grown up, I'm working with my own children growing up in the community with soccer teams and baseball teams, so mostly working with kids. And then other than that, I haven't done a whole lot locally beyond that. My wife and I have donated our time when applicable over at my father's kitchen, maybe to hand out meals on holidays and things like that, like a lot of folks do here. Donate some clothes, but.
Yeah.
Other than that, we're just trying to live the American dream, got our first house and we're trying to get all those, all these things settled and get ready for our new grandchildren, hopefully they're on the way soon.
Okay, great. So before the house in the first ward, were you living on a farm or a family farm still?
I actually lived about a half a mile from the house I grew up in. And my brother lives in it currently, it was my dad's house, after he passed away, we moved him in there. Though I didn't live on the farm, I lived pretty close to it. I rented a house out there next to my dad's. It's actually owned by the Murphys.
The farmers?
No, the house that I lived in out there was owned by the Murphys, which was kind of buttressed up against Tolliver Farms' property.
Okay, so you went to Wilmington High School?
Yes.
And then did you do wrestling growing up then?
Yeah, I was a wrestler myself.
Okay.
My head coach when I was in schools, Ron Sexton, and the assistant was Jeff Wiederhold. When Ron left, Jeff took over. And then when I started coaching, I was an assistant for Jeff. And when he retired, I took over, so it's kind of neat, I got the program handed off to me from the coaches I had as a kid. And they set up a really great foundation for the program.
I don't follow the wrestling team that much, but I think I do see it in the paper every now and then, you guys are doing pretty good then, right? Or?
We're doing really well.
Do championships and stuff?
Yeah, we've broken a lot of records.
Okay.
Last year, we took four kids to state and that'd never been done before.
Okay.
In high school history for Wilmington anyway. And then to, this year we repeated that. We did it again and we're also taking a fifth that's an alternate.
Nice, yeah, I, I know that the schools, it seems like their football and basketball team don't do too well, but I see like their wrestling and their bowling teams are at least crushing it, it seems like.
Yeah, they're swimming in there too, they're pretty consistently going to state, yeah.
Nice.
Yeah, they haven't been real consistent in football and basketball here lately, but historically wrestling is always right in the mix, doing pretty well with league and state and things.
What is a, what, what's your passion for wrestling? What do you think that that, is it just like teaching wrestling or do you like how you get to interact with the students and like build their characters or something? Talk about that, I guess.
I'm glad you asked that, I think it's the most difficult high school sport there is. And one thing about wrestling is, is the, the mental toughness that you have to build to to push through pressure and to overcome obstacles. You're going to learn some things in that sport that you just don't learn in some other sports. It takes a lot of personal responsibility. There's not a team to depend on while you're on the mat, although it is, there is a team component to the sport, but no one's making the mistakes out there but you. So it's, it's about as honest as you can get in a, in a competition between two individuals, you know, there's, there's no balls, there's no nets. It's just you and another person and you have to make them submit.
Yeah. Can you, is there like a quick story you can share about a student's character progress or, you know, journey starting out to maybe winning a championship or?
Yeah, luckily we have a lot of those here recently. I got to work with a great kid a couple of years ago and in wrestling, you always want to bring a kid in, discuss some experience. We had one come in that had never wrestled before and he was a junior. And that's always a tough obstacle to overcome because now we got to teach him a bunch of technique. Well, that kid ended up qualifying for state that year and placing in state the senior year. He's a straight A student, now he goes to Wilmington College, his name's Brett. Brett's a great kid, just picked it up and ran with it and I think it made him a better football player and athlete in the end, but.
Yeah.
It's fun to watch the transition.
His time was up, it just.
Okay, so next question is, why are you running for council? What are the things that you hope to address and how do you plan on addressing them?
I got you. Okay, so I've never been a politician before. And I think over the last two or three years, a lot of folks that weren't paying attention to local politics are now awake. I think if we just look around and if you, if you even turn the news on, which a lot of people don't anymore and I don't blame them yet, there's, there are a lot of things going on that need addressed in our nation, little in our local communities. I think a lot of citizens are coming forward to run for political office that have in the past and I'm one of those guys. I feel like I have to come in and at least do my part. And you know, there's a lot of people that run for office that, that want to be politicians. And you know, they actually, I think want to make a career out of it and that's just not, that's not how this is supposed to work, that's not what our forefathers intended. Citizens are supposed to come in and do their time and then go back to the private sector and do your part and then with the next guy, have a crack at it. And I, I thought about it for a while, I've talked to a lot of close friends locally about it, prayed about it with my wife and just decided, yeah, I think maybe this is the time I should step in and see what I can do here locally. And the big issues around here, I think infrastructure is a big one for me. I think it's super important for every community to be as self-sufficient as possible. But I'm talking about not only waters and our, our water system and our streets and roads and bridges, but also, you know, our internet infrastructure. There's a lot of people rurally around here that don't have great internet unless you're stuck out by the pheasant farm or somewhere out like that rurally, you won't know just how hard it is to actually get a good connection, which is detrimental around here for the workforce, especially in these days and times, to be able to have a good access. Then the big one probably is crime. It's another reason I'm running. I, I have, you know, I've got three children, one of them's already moved away. And I have one grandchild on the way. I, I would like to raise my grandchildren in the same community that I was raised in. And I'd like it to be as safe and clean as possible. And Wilmington just doesn't look the same to me as it did twenty-five years ago, as far as that goes. It's gotten bigger, we've gotten some new businesses that are exciting, but some that were exciting have left, I'm sure people have seen the changes, but you know, when I'm, I'm seeing and talking to parents that have needles at the bus stops, when their children get on the bus, that's just unacceptable in a small town like Wilmington. It's not, in the too distant future, we ranked one of the best small towns in America and we're nowhere near on that, on that list now, I'm sure.
We were in the past listed as that.
I think it was the late nineties, early two thousand, memory serves.
So how do you plan on addressing those things, which would be, be more self-sufficient and then crime?
I'm really concerned around here, the people, it, maybe it's my perception, but you know, the conversations I've had with locals, we don't put enough emphasis anymore on our agriculture community. We don't have kids involved in four H like we used to. FFA is not as popular anymore in our schools. There, there's a, I think a huge opportunity we're missing out there by not embracing agriculture. Instead of opening up new farms and seeing farmland being used the way I believe it should be. Around here, we see, for instance, solar farms come in or people selling those off and putting them under roof. We need our farmers, we're the breadbasket of the world and once we stop here, it's big trouble for everybody.
And then the, the crime, how would you as, as a council member go about addressing that in the needle situation?
I was fortunate enough to be in a forum a few months back and we had a deputy sheriff there and the chief of police. And there were a bunch of different folks in the community there as well as myself. There were lawyers, doctors and all kinds of folks talking to them. They said they needed from the community to be more involved. That's what law enforcement is saying to us and they also told us the problems they're seeing. You know, they, some sheriff departments from neighboring counties do actually drop people off in our county and that comes from the sheriff's deputy that I spoke to. I didn't even know that kind of stuff happened or that it was legal, but I, I guess those things do happen. So we need to probably mitigate that or, or do the same in kind. I guess if we're going to have people brought to us, then the people that need to be moving through need to be dropped off to the next county. But I, I really think after talking to the police as well, that I think it would help if we bolster our force and add some folks. I think I'd like to also propose, I'm not sure from a city council perspective, how much I would be able to affect this, but I think the veterans should be in our police force from top to bottom and in our local schools, we should be using them to help as far as hall monitors and having a presence on the school grounds. I think right now we have one policeman that's a resource officer over here, Officer Black. It'd be great if we had five or six, I think, resource officers over there to have a presence.
Okay, we'll wrap up that point, but yeah, that's, sounds good.
Well, nobody likes drugs, I mean, I think that's party, that's really the elephant, right? Nobody wants to talk about where these drugs are coming from until we, until we get fentanyl and stuff like that stopped.
So last question, and this is response to local criticism and concerns. This is going to be like just on you to anything that you've heard maybe about you or things like that that you would want to just address, so that would be this round and then I'll go ahead and put five minutes on here. The first thing is, if anyone does Google your name, I guess you were in the paper a while back about some issue with a transgender student. So I am not here to like put you on blast, but that was an article in the paper. So can you, can you flesh that, what actually happened, what was the issue and what, just tell us more about that, I guess.
Sure, to the best of my ability.
Sure.
This is the first time I've actually been given a voice over the issue.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, from the inception, when that started, I was told not to speak, so I didn't really have anyone on my behalf to speak because I was an employee of the school, so I just had to be quiet, I was basically gagged. There was a student we had on the team that was transitioning, I didn't know it. And when I found out, when it was brought to my attention, I removed that student from the locker room. And then the parents got angry because they wanted that student in the locker room. So this was a biological female transitioning to a male. And then, of course, fireworks ensued. I was in the national line light there for a while, actually, I got death threats from as far away as Australia, Spain, Canada, France, I still got most of this, it was a pretty fiery time for me to live through, but persevered and I'm still here, but in the end, that student sat down with the school board and myself and the athletic director and the proposed solution was that they come back out for wrestling next year and be able to participate in the sport. And then they never came back.
Okay.
So was your intent just to protect that student and the other student's safety and comfort level?
Yeah, absolutely. I had a lot of parents that were supporting me through that time that obviously didn't want their sons in a locker room with a biological woman. And, and actually the physicality of the situation, it's where the coaches also changed, so I would have been putting myself at risk, obviously, changing the same room as a biological female, which is not going to work out.
And I'm sure that's hard, especially when it's, it's not adults involved, it's minors.
Right, that makes it obviously fairly hard to deal with, but, and this is the crazy world we're in now. I mean, there's a lot of folks out there that don't, that believe there's more than two genders and there's not. It's, I'm sorry, they're going to have to wake up someday to that reality, but the rest of us are already in realities.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, I was in high school, when you're in high school, you're a horny little boy, so have a girl in the locker room with you, it's like, that's just supposed to be for disaster, it seems like.
That's just dangerous and everyone's putting themselves at risk and it shouldn't happen.
Oh, yeah.
The strange thing that was involved in that is, is the mother, the mother wanted, I think, try to make it about a female being in the sport and there was just nowhere to go there because we've been doing that for years, my own daughter wrestled, so that was never a concern.
Okay.
The concern was locker room facilities. And I think the school even built a facility for that student, but the student never came back, so that's a large waste of funds for a facility that doesn't get used, but. I, I, I'm sure there was some criticism, but I really, through all my interactions with parents, was praised for what I did on my end, for protecting my athletes, but.
Any other thing on that topic or any other concerns that you want to address? And obviously you're running against someone else, so is there any other things that you want to address to, for your stance or?
I would like to take the opportunity to say that one thing this community needs now more than ever is a lot more Jesus. We don't, we don't have, our, our local churches, I think, have stepped up in the last few years, but until people embrace God, embrace faith and in some way get that in, back into our schools, we're going to keep failing. And our school is the main source of our community in my estimation. Or if we don't invest in our children, we're going to keep failing as a community. If we want new businesses to come in here, we have to have a good school system in place that's producing good results. Right now, we don't have that. A lot of businesses are not going to want to move here and employees that work for those businesses are going to want to resettle in Wilmington. The school system is one of the first things you look at.
Sure.
And Clinton Massey and our surrounding schools are doing fairly well. We're losing headcount at Wilmington, from what I've heard, our numbers are going down, students are leaving. We're not producing good results and if I was a parent, I, I may do the same. And I want to help make that better. Wilmington can do better. We can be better.
Yeah. So you're, you're for the school, I mean, I suppose then?
I'm not right now. I, I wouldn't say, hey, go push this money here because it looks like someone's pushing money to solve a problem, I don't think that is the issue.
I see what you're saying, sure.
There's policy that needs to be addressed.
Sure.
And I'm not going to run out and tell parents, hey, you need to do this or do that for, until they probably see some results, and I have a lot of parents telling me that.
Gotcha. Well, thank you for your time, appreciate it, it was good talking to you.
You too.
Hi Josh, welcome to the Real Change Wilmington Podcast.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
You guys.
Yeah, excited. So we're going to ask you the same five questions that we asked Kelly and you have five minutes to answer each one and they're pretty casual questions. So the first question is just about who you are, tell us about your family background and your life in Wilmington.
Yeah, so I was raised in Holmes County, Ohio, in an Amish home. We were taught integrity, responsibility, care for our community, honesty, we had a strong work ethic. And I had a great family, a great home life, great upbringing. As I got older, I just realized I don't think this is the place for me for the rest of my life and it was a difficult decision, but I did walk away from that. I had a good conversation with my family and I was able to honor them. When I was twenty, I left the Amish persuasion and I had some friends who were actually involved in humanitarian aid work and invited me to go with them and some of their church members to Southeast Asia, which changed my perspective on so many things to spend a year overseas. And when I came home, the company I was employed with offered me a job in Southern Ohio because the housing market was really strong at the time. And they wanted to reach the Cincinnati, Columbus and Dayton markets and they offered me a position in this town called Wilmington. And I said, sure, why would I not go? And I stayed in an apartment on Newham Street. The first few nights, I was kept awake by all these planes flying overhead, the train going by my bedroom window. And I thought, man, what is happening in this town? Like, does nobody ever sleep? And it took me a while to get acclimated, but I fell in love with the city of Wilmington and a few years later, we got married, started our family, I purchased a home in Lakewood subdivision on the west side of town. And we had our first child in two thousand and eight, the economy crashed, DHL left. The company I was with closed their operations here and offered me a job back at home. I say home, Holmes County. And we felt like we had been involved in, a church started here already. We had friends who were struggling and facing hardships and this was where we were supposed to stay at. So we did and we started our own company. And as the economy slowly came back, we were able to grow with it. In two thousand and sixteen is when we purchased Ellis Spence. Two thousand and eighteen, we merged the two companies that we had together to form Ellis Spence and Home Exteriors. And we have twenty-four full-time employees now with full benefits. We have a wonderful team, amazing guys working for us in and around our community and we're really blessed, feel really fortunate to be able to call Wilmington home. We recently purchased the vacant lot, one seventy-one South Mulberry Street, along the bike path. Terry and I really care about investing in our community and cleaning up some of those downtown areas and we had walked by that lot so many times and felt like, man, I wish someone would do something with this. And when we saw a for sale sign, we decided, maybe that someone is us. So we used our home equity line, purchased it and I've been working at cleaning that up over the last year, year and a half and have plans to build a bike shop and cafe on the corner. And phase two, we hope to build residential condos towards the back of the property, but we do not have any timing on that yet. We would, we had anticipated pre-selling those just to test the market earlier. And we had one pre-sold and I felt like the risk factor was pretty high and we decided to proceed with the commercial structure and keep phase two as for in the future just to see what the market conditions are and what kind of interest we get down the road. So I love Wilmington, I'm proud to call it home. We want to have a safe. I love Wilmington. I'm proud to call it home. We want to have a safe, clean, prosperous city. For us to raise our family in, and we try to use. The life experiences we've been given. I try to use my upbringing and the things I was taught. To make a positive difference in the world around me.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah. I have a, I know you're, we're done with time, but how how did you and your wife meet?
Oh, so we, she was in Bangladesh for three months, the same time I was in. Another section of Southeast Asia doing humanitarian aid and mission work, and we did not meet there, but when we both. Came home from our respective time overseas, we have a mutual friend. Who started getting people together who were kind of working through reverse culture shock.
Yeah.
And just talking through what we experienced there and how we're experiencing life back in America, and that's where we met. Um, kind of in our home support group.
Okay. Is she from Wilmington or?
No, my wife is from Dalton, Ohio, small town in Wayne County, which is just. A little bit about thirty minutes north of where I grew up, just north of Holmes County.
Okay. I think it's honorable that you decided to stick around Wilmington when things were going crazy, and I think it's pretty cool that you're making this place your home. You're taking ownership of places in town like the the lot that you just bought, so it's pretty awesome.
Yeah, we do. It it was a decision made with prayer and uh just felt like that was where we were supposed to be is to to. To be staying here and to not run away when things got a little dark in two thousand eight, so I'm happy to call it home and I'm glad we made that decision.
Yeah, yeah. So you ready for the next question?
Bear fire away.
Okay, get ready to give you another five minutes here. Tell us about your public service accomplishments.
Sure, so the first public service I would have engaged in was humanitarian aid work that I just. Referenced with my friends and that I grew up with spending time in Southeast Asia. So we lived in Thailand and we worked for an organization called Global Tribes Outreach, and we worked with teams of doctors. And we worked with a group in Burma called Free Burma Rangers, David Eubanks. Uh, fantastic organization really focused on caring for the most destitute. Uh, people who are being attacked and uh chased out of their villages who have no food. In Burma, uh really difficult situations, things we experienced and saw, we we did a three-day trek through the jungle. And took food supplies and games and stuff for children to be playing with. And um just incredible loss and heartache that we experienced there. Will haunt me forever, um seeing people who were living in huts. Or people who would come and tell you that they've lost family members because of the ethnic cleansing that's happening there. Um, and spending time with them was so impactful. Um, spending time with, we we had an amazing trip with a team of doctors through. The Himalayas and Tibet where we uh did, we checked children who had. Heart defects. We were looking for heart defects because of the high altitude of the Himalayas often. Um, they can have a heart defect that as they grow and their body develops and requires more oxygen. They're not able to, they're not able to develop at the same rate, and and so we were testing children in schools for potential. Um, heart defects in order to save them from. Possible asphyxiation in the future as they grew and just simply wouldn't be getting enough oxygen to breathe. So that was. An amazing experience as well. Uh, we we traveled through a number of other countries. We led short-term teams that would come. Um, we worked with the underground church that is being persecuted in a number of countries there as well. That was my first experience in public service. Coming home, we have always been involved in uh church work. Ministry work and moving to Wilmington. We had attended the Nazarene Church for quite a while and eventually felt like there was a need here for. A new church and my wife and I planted and started a church called Door of Hope that. Grew and eventually purchased and remodeled the building at four ninety-five East Locust Street. Here in Wilmington by the, right by the railroad tracks, across from UDF and Speedway, the building that is now Hope House. So we purchased that and started meeting there for church for a number of years. We pastored that. Church for about seven or eight years and eventually handed that over to people who took that responsibility. From us, so we had about seven or eight years in in leading that church. We currently attend Dove Church. Here in Wilmington, uh we actively lead a small group with Dove and and are happy to participate in. Um, you know, areas that we're asked to lead out in and serve as we can with our church. And I'm currently serving on the City of Wilmington Planning Commission as well. I was appointed there three years ago. This will be my fourth year. On the City Planning Commission, and uh I've really enjoyed. Being a part of that and seeing the projects that come through our city, um being able to kinda ask. Questions and figure out why someone is interested in doing a certain project and then just trying to make things work. Um, with our city, uh. The county, uh what was it called? The County Comprehensive Plan that we did a few years ago, making sure that projects kind of. Fit into what the Clinton County Comprehensive Plan is leading us towards and directing towards. So development happens. In the proper areas, in the proper ways. Um, that's been really insightful. I've I've enjoyed my time serving in that way as well.
Yeah. That's pretty interesting. Does that give you some insights? Did that give you insights into when you were purchased your land and? You you had the inside scoop of the city, I guess?
Uh, I don't know if I would say inside scoop, but we did know like this was an area that. Would be targeted, wo- would could be targeted for future use. As a pedestrian uh friendly area, just because of the bike path coming through. And then I think the city has plans for, and you know, they may have had them for twenty-seven years, I'm not sure, but. The idea of revitalizing Sugar Tree Street, uh potentially a trail heading west instead of having to cut. Through town and back to the Southeast Park to connect the trail coming from behind Crower to Mulberry Street. Potentially having a trail that kind of uh winds through Wilmington College instead and uh is a little more pedestrian friendly. So we certainly um would be excited about that, but those weren't necessarily decisions that. We made based on, or we didn't purchase the lot based on any connection like that.
Yeah, I've heard of the Sugar Tree Corridor project or whatever, and I I guess they got put on hold or something. Currently put on hold.
Funding currently, yeah.
So two more questions.
Fire away. I'm ready.
So why are you running for city council and what is your vision and what do you hope to accomplish if elected?
Hmm. So I am running for city council. Because I want to have a safe, clean, prosperous city. We have four children. That's what I want for them. I would be happy if my children stayed in Wilmington, worked here. And we had grandchildren here. I truly do love this city. I feel like I've been adopted in as. One of their own, one of our own, and I call it home. Running for city council. Feels like something I've considered in the past, but this year I felt a definitive push towards that for those reasons. Our children are getting older. I believe the experiences I've had in life and in business will serve our city well. I'm not one to make quick knee-jerk reactions. And then have regret later. I like to think through. The information I have. For a few days, a few weeks, talk to people. And then make a good informed decision. That's what I wanna offer at city council is a level of integrity. A level of honesty. I'm also able to admit when I'm wrong and say. I made a mistake here. Here's how we fix it. And let's proceed. I'm not one to point fingers a lot or yell at people and say. You did this wrong or you did that. I feel like. I wanna extend honor and grace to people who are moving in a good direction, and I wanna be a part of that movement. I want Wilmington to be successful. There was a time when Wilmington was named one of the one hundred best small cities in America to live in. And I want to be able to say that again. I think we're well on our way. I know there's a lot of. Negative talk that can be said about our city, but I see the hope in it. I see the best in it. Um, I am. Unashamedly, a optimist, so I see the glass as. Half-full and continuing to be filled, and I wanna pour into it as much as I can. I am. Happy to make investments of time, energy, the resources I have, the skills I can offer. Our personal finances, we have, we're not scared to invest either, and I feel like we have done so with our small business. With the purchase of the Mulberry Lot, and I just want to be someone who is actively doing the things that they say they're going to do. So I would just ask um for support from people. For myself in pursuing those things. I. Want the best for our city. I want to offer my best for our city and I'd be happy to serve in this capacity.
Nice. Yeah, I've seen a lot of uh your chart signs around First Ward, so.
Well, thank you. With a name like Schleball, I feel like I need to get out there and get it out because I believe we are the only. Schleball family in Wilmington and probably Clinton County, so need to get it out.
What's that, that, what's the name background? Is it like?
It's German.
Germany.
Swiss, yeah.
Okay.
It's a very common uh name in in Holmes County, and uh we actually were able to, this past summer, our family traveled to. Switzerland and Germany with my dad, who is still Amish, and Terry's mom, who is Mennonite. And our children, so we had our three generations traveling together, and we were able to visit our original families. Home farms in Switzerland, which was amazing that we found those from the seventeen hundreds. We were able to trace. That location and then the ancestors of ours who immigrated by ship to Lancaster, Pennsylvania. Spread from there, ended up in Northern Ohio, and we, excuse me, we've made the trek to Southern Ohio. So to connect all those dots, to have our children along, to have our parents along was really, really a special, special event.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, so that's the rundown of the Schleball name.
Yeah, I mean, I've heard people talk about you in town in positive ways, so I mean, your name is out there.
Yeah, well, thank you. I I still feel like um ask someone how to spell it, and they might still struggle a little bit, but. I'll put it on the sign big and out front.
So do you speak German?
I do, yes, yep. And I'm working on Spanish, but Duolingo's been pretty helpful with trying to be, trying to be trilingual, but. I'll, I don't think I'll label myself as trilingual yet, but working on it.
Been trying for the last two years to learn German through Du- Duolingo, but I am real like get into it for like three weeks and then. Forget about it for a year.
Yep.
All right, so our final question is your chance to just respond to any community concerns or criticisms about you. And your campaign. Uh, does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. Um. Community concerns. Well, I guess I'll address the the criticism part first maybe. If I do receive criticism. One of the first things I do is just introspectively say. Why is someone asking this? What's the reason behind it? What can I learn from it? Do I need to change something? And really just honestly look at it and say, this this criticism is leveled at me because of 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 why. And then I think I just have a sense of peace in fleshing that out and saying, here's my path forward. If it's coming from a credible source and there's actually. Reason behind what someone is saying or or questioning, I'm more than happy to try to talk to someone and say. I didn't see it that way. Here's, have a have a constructive conversation in person. Would be uh always open for that. I don't spend a lot of time on social media. I enjoy being connected with my friends. That's what I use it for. I feel like. Social media is a great tool for connection, for getting word out. I don't feel like it's a great avenue of really having constructive conversation. I'm not sure anyone has ever said I've changed my mind because of what I have seen or heard here. But I do invite anyone who has questions, please come, send me a text, email me, reach out. I'm more than happy to talk to people in our city who have questions about anything in my life. I don't really feel like I have anything. To hide personally or um, you know, as far as running for a city council either. I'm open to whatever. Um, the other part of the question was, that was the criticism part of.
It was, it was criticism concerns. I just had people like.
Concerns from this, yeah, yeah. So one of the biggest things in our city that people are really concerned about right now is the homeless and the vagrant population. I mean, I I certainly have concerns about that. I like, I I want to have a safe, clean city for us to raise our family in, and that's a, that's a part of it. I want our kids to feel safe on the bike path, and if we rent bikes to people from our bike shop, I want them to feel safe cruising down past the hospital. I want to have things cleaned up. I feel like the last few years, unfortunately. Covid has really fragmented us as a society. We've become disconnected, and I think one of the things. That will really help us with this is to, instead of standing uh ten feet apart from each other and pointing the finger at each other and saying. You're wrong because of this and you're wrong be- because of this. Can we work together and acknowledge that? Even though my response may not be what yours is, you actually want the same thing I do. We want a safe, clean city. So the way you're going about conduct, working towards that, I want to extend honor to that. And say, I hear you, and you go and take those pictures and you. This guy over here, you you talk to people and figure out where their family is from, and if you need to take them. On a, on a drive somewhere or buy them a plane ticket and and get them connected to where they can get help, then let's, let's do that. Let's work together. Um, I'm all for working together to create a safe, clean city for us to live in. And I think nobody would argue that. I think that's actually what we all want. I think it would be really great for us to actually work. Together to accomplish that then, um instead of feeling so disconnected. I know Covid has disconnected us. I think um, it's unfortunate, but. I would certainly be happy to reach across that gap and to say, let's honor each other's gifts and let's work together. In how we are processing and moving forward in accomplishing the same goal that we actually. Deep down all do want.
How do you plan on facilitating those kind of that togetherness, I guess?
So I will work with supporting our police, with our mayor, uh with individuals in our city. I want to hear their perspective, and I wanna help them carry on and accomplish those things that they're wanting to go after instead of. Saying, this is not a good idea or this, this is not going to work. Um, I. Will certainly help direct people towards mental health facilities if that's what they need. Help people who have addictions get the help that they need, but I also just want to say. We, crime is not okay in our city. And I want to make sure our police department has what they need to do their job. And if there is crime that's committed, I feel like it's similar to raising our children. If you put a consequence in place. That helps your children remember the next time that they want to step out of line, that they don't want this consequence to happen. that helps your children remember the next time that they want to step out of line, that they don't want this consequence to happen, they won't do it again. And I think we can implement that a little stronger in our city where if you commit a crime in our city, there should be a consequence that you remember the next time you're attempted to commit that crime, that you don't want that to happen to you again. So I want to make sure our police department has the support, the funding, and the tools that they need to help with that.
Well, time is up, so thank you for that answer. Um Emily and I got to do a ride along with the police yesterday. And one of the things that they mentioned is that they would like to see stronger judging or judge, something like that, so they, they, they can, they can clean up the streets, but then they hand them over to the law. They wanna see some stronger punishments or just things to be enforced so people don't go back on the streets and reoffend, and they're just constantly like, they're only a part of the system.
Sure, yep.
Yeah, but anyways.
I would be in favor of that as well. A great judge uh who has the same ideals would be wonderful.
Yeah. Thank you for being on our podcast. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good to be with you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, well, that was our episode with Kelly and Josh. I hope that you guys got some information about them and hope that has informed your decision on who you want to represent you as First Ward City Council member. Emily, any, any takeaways?
Just that it is important to get out there and vote because if you don't vote, you can't make a change in our city.
Yeah, and this is a little bit of a inside scoop. Emily has never voted before.
Been too afraid.
Too afraid, but she is registered to vote, correct?
Yes, I am. So the first time I could ever vote, I was eighteen in two thousand sixteen, and it was the presidential election, and it scared me. So I just assumed that all voting was scary, but I figured if I'm gonna interview everybody and be here, I should probably participate.
Yeah, so I had to educate her on how to vote by uh putting the candidates you want on a note card under your pillow, and then the election fairy comes and gets them, and that's who becomes the next candidate.
Oh, and you can't tell nobody who you have.
And I told her you can't, yeah, I told her you can't tell anybody. It won't come true, so. That's not true. Just FYI. That's not how voting works for any kids listening. But uh yeah, thanks for tuning in and be sure to catch our next podcast on the judge candidates and mayoral candidates. And then finally, the school levy. So stay tuned, there's some good content. I'm Dustin Pierce.
And I'm Emily Spencer.
Keep it real Wilmington.
Fourth Ward!